Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Work Session for August the 6th, and I want to call the meeting to order at this time. And we've had the agenda for several days now, board members, you've had a chance to review it. Do I have a motion that the agenda be approved as it is presented?
Send me.
Have a motion, and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda's set, and we're ready to move forward with our report section. At this time, I'd like to look at the salary study, 3.1, and I'd like to ask Ms. Kathy Auger to come to the podium, and she's going to give us the report on the salary study. This is the final of the report.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce to you again, and you've met them earlier in the summer, Mr. John Anzavino and Ms. Stephanie Davis of Springstead Incorporated. They'll be presenting to you the final results of the salary study this evening.
I got it.
Got it.
Click your mic. Let's do the page view right here.
Oh, thank you.
That way you can see your pages on the side, and you can just advance to the next one, see?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Shepherd, I'm John Anzavino, and of course, this is Stephanie Davis. We're glad to be back here again to present the results of the school division's first comprehensive salary study, which has been done in many years. There were several objectives that were provided to us when we initiated this study earlier this year. First of all, to look at the external competitiveness of the salary ranges and wages that existed here in the Cabarrus County School Division as they related to the marketplace. Were you too high? Were you too low? Were you just about right? We also were charged with taking a look at your compensation policies to see if they were up to date, and if they were in conformance with what other public school divisions were carrying out, and we have looked at those. We were charged with establishing-- whoops.
Apologize for this.
When I started as a county manager, we didn't have computers, we didn't have fax machines, and we didn't have hold buttons on the telephone. It was a much simpler life. But we do have technology now, and it's great for all of us. We were also charged with establishing internal equity between positions. That is, if positions had like educational requirements, like experience requirements, like physical demands, and a wide range of other things, were they classified within the same salary range? And we were also charged with ensuring that job descriptions, your position descriptions for your non-instructional personnel, were up to date, and they complied with applicable laws such as the Fair Labor Standards Act and the American with Disabilities Act. There were several other objectives that we were provided. We were also asked to enable ongoing administration and maintenance of the pay study by school staff. So at the end of this presentation, in the next couple of weeks, we will be back, and we'll be training your staff in how to use the system that's been employed to evaluate employees, place them in the pay ranges, so that you don't have to call us back, and there's no charge. We were also charged with updating the current classification system and salary ranges to make sure that they're competitive in the regional marketplace, and we did a fairly comprehensive survey to gather information in regard to that, so that you can maintain quality employees within the school division, but also, as folks begin to step aside and possibly retire, you can attract folks, and you are competitive in the marketplace as you do that. And then we did provide a listing, or have provided a listing, of all positions, non-instructional positions, in conjunction with their status under the Fair Labor Standards Act, whether they're exempt or non-exempt. The methodology that we used in conducting this study has been highly interactive with your staff. We had meetings with your superintendent, your assistant superintendent for Human Resources, your directors and assistant superintendents, total of eighteen different interviews spread across a week with the staff here in Cabarrus County. We also conducted twenty-two employee orientation meetings, and because of the large volume of staff that you have here, there was representative sampling of some staff in some of the groupings of different types of employees. But we sat down, we walked through the process of how we were going to conduct this study, what the outcomes might be, how the staff was to be involved in the study, to tell us what they were doing in their jobs, and this is particularly the non-instructional staff. Had twenty-two of those meetings. In these types of studies, we gather a copious amount of data. We have your policies, your operating procedures, your most recent payrolls were utilized with level-- years of service, positions, your insurance programs, your benefit programs. We've looked at all of those as part of our analysis of the system, and we had to gather all of that data, as well as other data here in the school division, to be able to begin that analysis. I would say that we took a wide range of data in different formats, and that is now cataloged and categorized in easily-- more easily used electronic formats, so that will be left with the school division as well. At the employee meetings, we provided them what we call position analysis questionnaires to gather information about what they were doing in their jobs, and asking them whether or not they supervised staff, what the essential functions were of their job, what educational requirements might be needed. From that, we developed draft position descriptions, new job descriptions for all of your positions, and there are one hundred and ninety-two position descriptions that we're leaving with your assistant superintendent for Human Resources that are all up to date, and have been developed with input from the employees here in the school division, and two levels of review by supervisors, as well as your assistant superintendent. So they are up to date, they are accurate, and they are classified properly. As we received the approval on the position descriptions, we then began to evaluate them. I'll talk about how we did that in a few moments, but we use an objective system of evaluation, which has been tested in the federal courts, to ensure that it's a non-biased system. It's about as objective as you can get. We also went out and surveyed a number of different public school divisions and other local governments to gain information in conjunction with benefits, as well as salaries. As we gathered that information, as we evaluated the positions, as we gained the information in regard to the market data on salaries, we developed a salary line using a statistical analysis, linear regression analysis, to help us develop a salary line, and also begin to look at how we would develop pay grades. We used the SAFE system to-- that objective system I touched on a few moments ago, to assign positions to the grades, and then we developed some implementation options for your consideration.
Good evening. Just to, again, introduce myself, Stephanie Davis, consultant with the Richmond office. And we'll be tag teaming the presentation this evening, as we did before, but some of our findings, just to give you a snapshot of what we found, the minimum of the district's current pay grades for non-instructional positions is low as compared to the market. Internal pay relationships and equities exist within the district, and we talked about that when we were here in May. We talked about compression issues. Employees in similar positions, performing similar jobs, with similar years of service, making different ranges of salaries. Or you have employees who have been here for a while, your pay grades have not moved, and they are making very close to new employees. So we have tried-- we have addressed compression issues in your new pay scales, and in the options. Teacher supplemental pay is low compared to the market. Recommendation to convert supplement pay scale, your current pay scale for your assistant principals and your principals, from an actual scale to a percentage-based, and we identified fourteen public school districts that use a percentage base for assistant principals and principals. We will talk about that in more detail as we go through the presentation. And the school district really has limited flexibility on fringe benefits. As you know, the state pretty much sets the standard of what you will do with healthcare, for your retirement system, those types of things. So we did find that. We did compare. You're consistent with your other jurisdictions, and obviously with the state requirements. Again, we'll go through that.
We also worked with your assistant superintendent for Human Resources to outline a pay philosophy for the district going forward. These types of systems are never static. Over the last four years, I would say that many jurisdictions, public school divisions, districts, as well as local governments, pay has been relatively static, but we see that beginning to change now, particularly here in the state of North Carolina. I had two or three calls from counties today concerning possible salary study updates. And the market is beginning to shift. That's because a lot of positions in many jurisdictions, there were consolidated positions, and the duties of positions have changed, and that's required additional skills to be learned and gained by the employees, elevating their skill sets, making them more valuable. So we have, within the study, outlined a pay philosophy which provides for fair and equitable compensation to employees. That is tying the analysis that we've completed to get them on to a level playing field. We feel that that will balance external market and internal equity through the analysis that's been completed, and with the process that we'll leave with Ms. Auger. It will provide you initially with a competitive pay structure, which really considers the district's fiscal resources. We've talked about in the study how this may be phased in over a period of time, but at the same time, we've talked about how this needs-- how this system needs to be reviewed periodically and updated on a periodic basis, in conjunction with what's happening in the marketplace. And we do believe that this is an understandable compensation program. It is a relatively simple program, but we have outlined how it's been established, the analysis that's gone into it, and why it needs to be updated.
When we talked to you in May, we talked about our salary survey and our benchmark districts and municipalities that we'd be using. We identified twenty-seven organizations working with your assistant superintendent for Human Resources. Eighteen of those were school districts, six county or city governments, and three private organizations. On minimum, we had an average of fourteen data points for each of the different types of data that we collected. And when I say that, what that means is we basically have three studies in one. We have one study that addresses non-instructional employees, where we looked at county, city government. We attempted to access private data. Then we also have school district data. Your next subset of your study is your teacher supplements, and we looked at fourteen districts and gathered their teacher supplement information, averaged it, and came up with a new supplemental scale. Then we also looked at the third subset of your study, looking at your assistant principals and principals, again, looking at fourteen districts, and ensuring that we had good information based on their responses. So I just want to make sure that we are all on the same sheet. As we go through the document, there really are three compensation studies using three sets of different data. Some at times are the same, some at times are different. I won't go through all of these. You have your presentation, but you can see, the ones that are starred are the ones that actually filled out our survey. And we had eleven respondents-- excuse me, eleven school districts respond. We had one, two, three, four, five counties that responded to the actual survey. And so when we sat down and we looked at the data after we had been here with y'all, going back through the information, we went out and accessed that data online. We were able to call HR directors and say, please just send us your pay scales, let us use that. So we had quite a bit of information that we used, not just from the survey respondents. Those are the stars. Again, we used different survey data for the three types of analysis. We surveyed sixty-two positions, and we had talked about that, the sixty-two positions representing all levels of the organization, and then in addition to, we gathered supplement data, principal and assistant principal data. Again, you can see the counties and cities that responded. We did not receive information from the private providers. We accessed and reached out to them through email, through phone calls, and through formal communication, and we were unable to access that information. Salary survey results. So once we took that information and we looked at the non-instructional and instructional data information, we have provided you with a proposed non-instructional scale that is an open-range system with thirty-two grades, five percent separation between grades, and fifty percent spread, which means the width of the pay range, between the minimum and maximum, with your midpoint representing the market, as reported by the respondents of the survey information, and what we gathered from online internet sources. When we asked and we looked at the different types of scales, sometimes we'll see a step system. Teachers normally have a step system, where you have a grade for your teacher, and then they have a step based on years of service. When we look at counties, when we look at the non-instructional, we're looking at an open range, and we have an example of that. You also have it in your report. So we have taken the data from your survey respondents and recommended an open-range system for the district, for non-instructional employees. The proposed teacher supplement scale provides for new supplements based on years of service. We've also broken that down between your master's and your bachelor's degreed teachers. Again, that's based on the average of the supplement data that was provided by the fourteen respondents. Your proposed principal and assistant principal scale is based on the survey data and represents a percentage. And we looked at the average percentage that was approved or authorized by the fourteen respondents, and we took the average. So they range from seven and a half, seven percent, up to twelve percent, and of course, depending on the number of respondents, we have seven and a half percent for your assistant principals, and eleven percent for your principals. Again, that went from about eight to fourteen percent in terms of the range, but on average, it was eleven percent. The nice thing about that type of supplement is it's a flat rate. It's very simple. It's very simple to use. Again, the majority of the respondents used a percentage base for principals and assistant principals, but it also recognizes years of service as a principal in Cabarrus. So the longer that you're here, the greater your supplement. Okay? I think I can do that easier, but I can't figure it out. Your new pay scales, again, are consistent with your survey respondents, and I like to group it in threes, the three sets of data that we have. It also recognizes the state pay scale for teachers. As you know, we have very little flexibility. In fact, we have no flexibility because the state sets the teacher salary. So we didn't even look at that type of analysis. We knew there was nothing that we could do. But it does-- your salary study does provide competitive local supplements for your teachers, principals, and assistant principals. This is your proposed pay scale for non-instructional employees. Again, you'll see it is thirty-two grades. The next section is on the next slide. Thirty-two grades, fifty percent spread between the minimum midpoint and max. Again, your midpoint represents the market, as reported by your respondents, and then five percent between grades. And that is your second sheet of the scales, excuse me. Your teacher supplements, you're looking at years of service. Again, we've broken that down from zero to thirty-four years of service, looking at the average supplement, proposing that amount for Cabarrus County. The bachelor's and master's broken out as well, to be consistent with your other districts.
As we looked at your non-instructional personnel and assigned their positions to the pay ranges, as I noted, we used the SAFE system, which stands for systematic analysis and factor evaluation. And what we did was we looked at the approved position descriptions, all one hundred and ninety-two of them, and we evaluated them based upon the nine factors that you see in the PowerPoint presentation on the screen. After we had assigned the position to one of six major categories ranging from manual labor, which may be some of your maintenance folks, on up into your professional or administrative staff. For each of these nine categories, there's a range of points assigned, based upon our experience in doing these studies over thirty years. And we look at what training and ability is required for the position. That is, what level is required? Is it a position where there's no training or ability required initially, that the person is going to be trained into the job, or is it-- do you have to have a higher set of skills? The level of work, how complex is the work that the individual conducts? Is it a very simple job, or is it a job which requires a lot of inductive thinking? What are the physical demands? Is it an office job? Is it a position which is out in the field, where there's a lot of physical stress? Independence of actions, does the individual who is in the job, or does the job itself, have the freedom to make decisions in regard to their day-to-day activities in the job, or are they closely supervised? Do they supervise anyone? And if so, how many folks do they supervise? If you don't supervise anyone, you don't receive any evaluation points. If you supervise fifty folks, you receive a certain number of points. What level of experience is required? Is this a position which you can begin fresh out of high school, out of tech school, out of undergraduate school, or do you have to have some experience and have been trained in the field over a period of time? What human relation skills does a position have to have to be successful? For example, who do you interact with? Do you interact only with your coworkers in a work setting, or are you interacting with individuals at a higher level, which may be outside the Cabarrus School District organization? And how often and how frequently are you interacting with those folks? What type of working conditions are you exposed to? Is this a job that has very nominal stress, or is it a job that has a high level of stress? And we evaluate based upon what we find in the position description. And then finally, the impact on end results. As we look at the job, if the individual has decision-making authority, if they do make that decision, what is the impact on the organization if the individual makes a good or a bad decision, and how does it affect the organization? From that, we've begun-- as you can see here, we've developed a salary curve, and the salary curve is done using linear regression analysis and statistical analysis. And on the vertical axis, we have the salary survey midpoints for all of the positions that we surveyed, that Stephanie discussed. And then we have the SAFE points on the horizontal axis. The line that you see there is our curve, and then we fit the midpoints in the positions that we've evaluated to the curve, to see how far-- how close we are to the curve. You'll see in the upper-right corner that we have a number, which is R2 equals 0.9591. That means we have what we call a fit of almost ninety-six percent. We feel that we have adequate data. We've evaluated the jobs properly. We have adequate survey data. If we get a fit on the curve of between ninety-two and ninety-nine percent, we have about ninety-six percent here in the Cabarrus study, so we're very comfortable with the data that we have received, how it's been utilized to develop the salary schedule, the midpoints, the curve, and also how the positions align in regard to the SAFE system.
The next step is looking at implementation, and one thing we wanted to make of note is that your implementation, your new scales, your new proposed scales, do not include coaches' supplements, and we understand that that might be something that the board may want to look at. Part of what we'll do over the next month with your staff is go through both the SAFE system, and how to conduct an informal survey, and how to use that information. We can certainly help your staff develop a coaches' supplement survey, to have that information available for you in the fall, and we'll work with them to make sure that that happens, and to provide y'all with the information. When we talk about implementation, we work, and we've worked with Ms. Auger, to discuss, now that we know the numbers, now that we know where the positions fit, there is a financial impact, and so we work with her and with all of our clients to determine what is the best way to utilize the resources here in Cabarrus County schools. One thing that is of note, and we're aware, the state has recently approved a 1.2 percent salary increase. That is across the board, and that is for all districts. So remember, even if your staff gets that 1.2 percent increase, all of our other benchmark jurisdictions got that as well. So this is above and beyond that 1.2 percent increase. We did want to make that a note, just so you understood how that data would work. Option one is to move all employees to the minimum of the salary range. These are your non-instructional impacts, and that is the minimum implementation option, adopting the new pay scale for non-instructional employees, and then moving those employees to the first step to the minimum of the grade. About thirty-seven percent of your non-instructional employees are below the new pay grades, if they were to be implemented. That's five hundred and fifty-eight employees of the roughly fifteen hundred employees that we have. The annual cost for implementation is $959,000, or roughly a 2.29 percent increase in your non-instructional payroll. One of the things that the board could consider is to implement this as of July 1, 2013, and as a result, you would have only half-year impacts with that type of implementation, roughly $500,000, less than that. So that is a consideration for the board. These are assuming full-year implementation, so $959,000. And again, that increases the market competitiveness, I'll use that word, in terms of looking at your other benchmark jurisdictions, and getting everybody and your pay scale in line with the market. We've talked about compression, talking about employees who have been here longer, making close to or about the same as employees who have recently been hired. One of the other options that we're offering the board is the move to minimum or provide a 2 percent increase. And what that means is you would adopt the non-instructional pay scale, you will place the employees that are below the minimum of the grade to the minimum of the grade, but then you would also allocate a 2 percent increase for all other employees. This helps with the compression issue. You're starting to separate those employees by 2 percent across the board. Again, provides at least a 2 percent increase. The annual cost for implementation is $1.5 million, or 3.67 percent of your non-instructional payroll. Again, if you were to implement that on January 1st, it would be roughly $750,000 to implement option two. Instructional salary impacts, your supplements. Again, we've provided for a new teacher supplement scale based on the average data from the fourteen respondents. The annual cost for implementation is $1.9 million, or 2.12 percent of your total supplement payroll for teachers. Again, provides for a new assistant principal supplement of seven and a half percent of the total salary for your assistant principals. Annual cost is $44,919, or less than five tenths of a percent of your total payroll. Instructional salaries impacts for your principal supplement of 11 percent, $28,202, or less than .3 tenths of your total payroll. So in terms of the impacts to your budget, when we came in May, we had general information, we had done some preliminary work, and it was roughly about $4 million at that time. Once we've revised those numbers, provided, got an additional salary information, your total financial impact for option two, so that's moving your employee, your non-instructional employees to the minimum, and providing a 2 percent increase for all others, implementing the assistant principal-principal percentage scale, and implementing your teacher scale, your total impact is $3.5 million. So we were consistent with what we were seeing from the big-picture perspective when we were with you in May. Again, financial impacts could be phased Again, financial impacts could be phased in over a three-year period. You could do that through implementation on January 1. You could do that with full-year implementation of the new non-instructional pay scale plus 2%, your option two in the first year. And the second year implementation, the teacher supplement scale. And again, in the third year implementation of your principal and assistant principal new percentages. Again, that is helping the board think about how you may want to implement a $3.5 million impact. There are a variety of ways that you could do, and we can certainly help you work through those with your assistant superintendent for human resources.
No, I think as we've just touched on, there's a need to revisit this on an annual basis, particularly as the market begins to come back to some sense of normalcy as it was prior to 2008. So annual adjustments in the future would need to be considered. And there needs to be some clear guidelines established for those annual adjustments. Some organizations that we work with use the Consumer Price Index, whether it be adjusted for regional Consumer Price Index or for the National Index, depending upon the level of sophistication of the entity that we're working with. Or there's another way to do it. You can find out what other jurisdictions that you benchmark against are doing on a consistent basis and average that together and come up with an increase for, you know, how the system should slide. I would note that, you know, if you look at the ranges where employees are slotted and a 1.2% increase is granted by the state, the range is probably, should shift 1.2%. The employee's salary should shift 1.2%. We've worked with jurisdictions that will shift not the range, but just the employee's salary. And that continues to keep the ranges artificially low. So we would suggest that they all shift if it's granted across the board. And then, of course, there's the need to evaluate particularly your non-instructional employees more closely on a performance basis that results in adjustments for them so that they can move through the range in a logical fashion and move from where they reside in the range towards the midpoint and hopefully towards the maximum of the range.
As part of your study, we did look at your fringe benefits. In the back of your, in the last few pages of your large report, there's about three pages of detail of all the information that we gathered. We've also provided that to you. One of the things to note is we did gather benefit information from counties, the counties that reported. So that information is shown in your appendix. However, when we looked at our analysis, what really is apples to apples when we're comparing fringe benefits? So we only looked at the school district information. The holiday leave, consistent with the survey average, 11 days as compared to 11 days. Your annual leave is consistent with the survey average as compared to other school districts. Again, your sick leave, same thing, consistent with the survey average. Your health insurance is covered by the state plan. So we know that that's consistent. Your life insurance, and we have checked that with the other districts, consistent with the survey average, as is deferred comp. The other piece that you do have some flexibility with is in terms of your elective fringe benefits, your flexible spending accounts, any kind of pre-tax deductions that you allow. I know in some cases you may allow for prepaid education payments to be automatically drawn for your employees. And those are just examples of things that you can allow that's not mandated by the state. You provide an excellent range of benefits to your employees, and it complements the entire package very nicely.
Now, in wrapping up, the first thing I would say is, we know from experience that you've received this report for the first time this evening, and you've heard a lot of numbers. And you'll undoubtedly want to review the report carefully because it does have a fiscal impact on the school district. So we're happy to come back if you want to have a more roll-up-your-sleeves type of work session, or we're happy to address questions at that type of session. But we feel that adoption of this report and the recommendations contained within will provide fair and equitable compensation for your folks, your employees here in the Cabarrus School District in what we see as a growingly competitive labor market. One thing that we've noticed recently, and we work with a lot of public jurisdictions, we have an aging workforce. And there are going to be a lot of vacancies in the future as folks retire. As you go out and search for the best and brightest folks to replace those folks who are stepping aside and embarking on another career, you're going to want to be competitive. And we think that we've hit the mark on that based upon the survey data. We've also dealt with the issues of internal equity, making sure that positions that have like and similar requirements are in the appropriate grades and similar grades, and those that are not are in separate grades. And that is addressed through not only the analysis that we've conducted using the SAFE system, but also through the external market competitiveness study that we've done. We do feel that your study and the recommendations for the ranges are, put you in a market position that is competitive and it is fiscally responsible. It's not too high, it's not too low. And that you do have the means and mechanism now to go forward, probably for the first time, maybe for the first time, with consistent administration of pay policies through a system that's been developed and is relatively uniform. So with that, that wraps up, you know, our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you folks may have as a board.
Okay. Mr. Enzavino and Ms. Davis, I want to thank you for the report, all the due diligence you've done, all this. So there it is, board members. We've got it laid out for us. We've got the objectives, the mythology, the findings, the impact, and what the recommendations are. So I'd like to start on maybe Ms. Minett's side. And if you have any questions that you'd like to direct to these folks, now would be the time to do that, if you have any questions or concerns.
I don't have any. It sounds like you've done a very thorough job of making the comparisons, not only among the public sector, but tell me how much you made comparisons of certain positions with the private sector as well? Or maybe you've already touched on that and I didn't quite get it.
The private sector is very difficult to gain information from on a direct basis. We've reached out to one company on several occasions, also to the universities. We did use some private sector data that we gained, which is on a regional survey basis, but not directly from those organizations. So there is private sector data incorporated into your non-instructional personnel categories, but not from the specific entities that were listed on the PowerPoint and in the report.
Ms. Minett, you finished? Okay. Ms. Carpenter, you have any questions, concerns?
Yes, thank you. My, I have a couple of concerns, and I don't know if they can be addressed. One of my concerns is using Mecklenburg County and then Durham County. Both of those are a lot larger systems, and it's kind of like, we're not comparing apples to apples, especially when you come taking their supplements, because they are a lot larger distance. And not really sure about Winston-Salem Forsyth. Again, lot larger than we are. I know that we sometimes have to compare, well, sometimes in competition with them, maybe for teachers and everything, but the way jobs are now, I don't know really if we are in competition with them. But when you're talking about money and everything, our systems, we've got a very good name for ourselves. And I think that a lot of people, you know, they come to us because we do. And a lot of people, they like to come to us. But then when you go comparing the money, I think it's a lot different. And I would rather look at, you know, people of our size and when it comes to that. The other thing, again, when you look at the chart that you had, employees below the minimum, employees within the range, and ones above, what has happened with other ones when you've done this? Because I know instances where this board itself, two years ago, when things, or three years ago, when it got really, budgets were really tight, and, you know, ourselves, we actually took a pay cut, a 15% pay cut in our salaries. I know my daughter that is in the private sector, she had to take a 35% pay cut from her existing salary. Now, I'm seeing 25 employees above their pay scale. $2 million in, $2 million dollar-wise amount, that would cover the actual whole amount of the people below the minimum, correct? Salary-wise?
If you eliminated those positions, yes.
Well, not eliminate, but I mean, that's it, the total, is that the dollar amount above that amount, or is that their total salary amount?
That's the total salary.
Oh, I thought that was just the difference. Oh, that, oh, okay. But you said 20, you don't give us the dollar amount there above then? That's not the dollar amount above?
That's included in the project summary. That can be summed very quickly, which...
How much that is, the difference there? Oh, you're talking, that's the total amount then? It's not the difference? Because I thought you were just giving us the difference. But you had 25 before. What has happened in your other instances where they've had people that are above? What do your other companies do when they have them above?
Particularly other communities and organizations and school districts that we work with, when we have employees which are above the maximum of the recommended pay range, freeze those positions in place. It's very unusual for any organization unless you're facing a period of fiscal stress like we've just come through to reduce salaries. Because folks have earned their way. And most of those folks, or probably all of those folks that are in excess of the maximum of the recommended range, are folks who are senior employees who have been with the organization for quite some time. I'd also like to address your concern about the entities used. Now, understand that we have blended together not only the data that we received from them, but private sector data from other sources and a wide range of data from smaller entities as well. They get treated, they are not weighted because they are larger divisions. They may have somewhat larger or somewhat greater pay range or supplement, but they are not weighted as such because they are a larger jurisdiction. And so as you blend that data together, if you were to pull that data out, I think you'd be surprised to see the level of impact or the lack of level of impact that would occur within those ranges. Because we've had that question asked of us before.
Okay, good. So then you're not getting that full impact? Because that's what concerns me, because I've seen the differences in sometimes pay scales within those two, especially Charlotte Meg, because we've dealt with that over and over again. So those were just two of my concerns and how companies do deal with. So basically, they would freeze those different ones.
Typically, yes.
You see that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Some very good questions. Mr. Keiger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I thank you, Mr. Enzavino and Ms. Davis, for all your time and effort. I too, I think we had the list of schools the first time around, and I think we said the same thing. I'm disappointed that really, at least specifically, Union and Gaston weren't in the mix, because I think they're similar to us in makeup, and it just may prove to be something we're going to have to deal with. As, you know, I supported doing the study. You guys have provided the information that we wanted. I wanted to be able to have it so that we can formulate a game plan. And I think it's incumbent upon us now to take what you've given us and work with Ms. Auger and Dr. Shepherd and figure out, how does this impact us and in what direction do we want to go? But I don't have any specific questions about the study. I do want to make one other comment, that no matter what we do, I think page 21 sums up something I hope that, in our district, at least philosophically speaking, where it says, "Adjustments that recognize individual employee performance." Because I don't ever want to be stuck as a system where, boy, you're slotted and as long as you get dressed and come every day and you're this scale and we're just happy you're here. If people are going above and beyond the call of duty and doing exceptionally well, I want, in our structure, to be able to recognize that. And I think that's very important, to make sure that we continue to set the bar high and be a good system.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Ms. Blackwelder?
I just have one question. During your salary studies with the other districts that you've done, are you seeing pretty much the same situation with smaller sizes, larger sizes, or our size of school districts where salaries are imbalanced? Or is it pretty much across the board, we were one of the lower ones? Which is what we talked about the first time we had you that night.
What we typically see is if a study hasn't been done for a period of time, there's typically a fairly significant impact. And what we've done is we've organized your system, we've pulled your ranges together, we've evaluated them against the market. I would have expected this type of increase. And it's typically what we do experience when we do a study. We did a study for a school division up in Virginia, much smaller school division. And their impacts, because they hadn't done a study, they had not remained competitive in the metropolitan market through increases, was greater than 50%. And so they had to phase it in over a period of time. Typically, we're seeing for all entities that we work with in the public sector, and we only work in the public sector, ranges of increases, that is, bringing folks up to the minimum anywhere between 15 and 30%. So it's not unusual to see this, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Ms. Furtwell, you have some questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I look at the, we just have the chart here just right in the presentation, the non-instructional employee grade, there could be a perceived interpretation that has to do with years of service. And I think that's probably a frequent misinterpretation of that. Because people could stay at a grade seven, for example, even though they have 20 years. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's based on their contribution or their level of position?
They're assigned to a grade seven based upon what they're doing in their job. And then they move from the minimum of that particular range, grade seven, towards the midpoint, towards the maximum, and they earn their way, however the system has to earn their way. Now, if they were to be reclassified to a grade eight or a grade nine, that would mean that something had changed in their jobs. They would have had, they would have learned more intensive skills maybe in the use of technology, or they had been trained at a higher level. So that would necessitate probably a grade change. Whereas if they're just going to, if they're going to come to work, be a good employee, do their job, they're going to earn their way through that grade seven, from the minimum to the maximum.
So as an example, what Mr. Keiger was saying about reward people who are having greater contributions, that could be done with the grade scale in reality? Or do we have to tie the grades to the state? Because I'm a little, I guess, we have all the scales with the state, but then we have, we would have our own separate grade here, and how would that mesh?
On the non-instructional personnel, we're speaking of non-instructional personnel in those grades. They're assigned to a grade based upon what they do in their job, how complex their job is, all of those things that we mentioned in the SAFE system. They earn their way based upon their performance, or should, based upon their performance in their job.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm thinking more about meshing with, don't we have some, because I thought we had classification of positions based on state, what the state pays for that position. Is that right, Kathy?
There are some very general non-instructional guidelines where we'd have to be sure we were at the minimum. They do not even have job descriptions associated with those pay grades that have been out there for a while. So we would have to be sure that we're in compliance. However, generally speaking, we typically have not had any issues at all with that in the past.
Okay. Okay. In the one example, where you're recommending supplement, and you say, "Measure total salary", do you include all of the things that make up salary, like master's degree, national board certification, longevity pay, all those things that might roll into a state salary?
I can answer that. Based on the data that we had, it appeared from the 14 respondents that it's based on the state salary. That is what it appeared to us. I think that you can structure that supplement however you would want to see that. In fact, we know that there are some positions there that have more than one supplement, just as you just said. So you certainly could structure it appropriately as how you see fit. What we saw was it is based on that state salary. Then everything else follows.
Yeah, that to me would be better, because I worry about you make the gap wider.
Exactly.
If you supplement on top of the supplement, then it starts growing exponentially from the low to the high.
Then that would be our recommendation. And we can develop some type of policy statement that says that.
Okay.
If that's the will of the board.
Yes, thank you.
Let's see here. And how do you pay, for example, a person who might have an instructional background but who is in a non-instructional role? So do you... So, do you pay them? Because we have that now. We have people who continue to get paid on the instructional pay scales, but they're in a non-instructional role. So, what do you recommend with that? Because I think we have some serious inequities, because people came from a certain background, elevated themselves to a certain salary, and now they're doing a role that would have inequities within their peer group.
We have followed the way that the system is currently in place, because it makes sense. And in terms of pay equity and making sure that everybody is, um, that salary curve is consistent with that ninety-six, ninety-five percent, we have left them on the instructional scale. There are a limited number of positions, but we have done that.
Okay. Um, and just, uh, the last thing is really a comment, because I won't be around to do the next budget. This amount of money is unprecedented to be able to throw to supplements. I mean, I think that's the reality of the world, and one of us needed to say that, so I did. So, I would suggest, in years gone by, and some of y'all will remember this, we had the five-year plan on increasing supplements. We never made it the whole way through the five years, and that was really for teacher supplements, because the budget issue started hitting after two thousand and one. I would suggest that these three kind of big buckets be broken down even further into what's a biteable portion that we think is even reasonable based on a percentage of our total budget and from year to year, and not make any one group wait too long down the list, because we all know what can happen from budget year to budget year. So, for example, if you do something for non-instructional, do your, um, most urgent, I would say, positions, whatever, and I don't have, didn't highlight everything there, but, um, and then do a little bit for the teachers and whatnot. So, I worry that we have this gap. When you do percentages, and even this one point two percent, somebody making fifty thousand dollars, one point two percent is a lot more than somebody making twenty-five thousand dollars. So, their gap just got wider. So, every time something's based on a percentage, it gets wider. So, anyways, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinball. Mr. Fur, you have some comments?
Yes, uh, I'd also like to thank you guys for the effort you put in for, for this information, and it's quite a bit of information. I'd like to add to what some of you guys said, and especially Blake, uh, I think you pretty much hit a nail on the head. And as well, Ms. Furtinball, with the, uh, in a way I would have liked to have done this is, I mean, the bottom line, at the end of the day, we're gonna have to ask Ms. Klutz, what can we do? I mean, we knew that going in. I guess that's the reason I'm the, I'm the long ranger up here, because I, I think I'm the only one that voted against this salary study. And because I think the way maybe we should have went, we should have went, found out, maybe, okay, here's the amount of money we got to divvy up, and then let's go to these guys and figure out how to divvy it up. But, you know, to me, we're putting the cart before the horse, because, uh, we may not have anything to give to these folks. And, and that was my whole concern right from the, the, uh, the start. But the information you guys provided is, uh, also is something I think we needed, uh, even though I was kind of against it. I, I, I see the value of the information that we have. But as I stated earlier, my concern is, we've got all this great information, but what are we gonna do? And as far as having Mecklenburg County in this, uh, survey, I think you have to because of, of the, uh, where they're at. I mean, I personally know a teacher that accepted a job last week at Charlotte Mecklenburg, leaving Cabarrus County, because he, with two kids and a family, could make five thousand dollars more a year. So, that's, that's a decent amount of money when you're trying to raise a, raise a family. So, I understand the gap and the reason Mecklenburg County is in this study. I think that they're gonna have to be. But, uh, I appreciate everything you've done.
Well, it looks like we got our homework cut out for us. You know, you got your part done, and that was money well spent. The board spent this money. I think it was very, uh, timely, and the results are similar, as Mr. Fur stated, to what we were expecting. Maybe out a little bit, and, but I think mostly what we were expecting. And now, as, uh, we know, we've got to find out a way to make it equitable and, and implement a plan, and hopefully we'll get started on that sometime in the next real soon future. Okay? All right, once again, Mr. Anzavino, thank you, and Ms. Davis, thank you again for coming. Thank you for all the hard work.
Mr. Chairman, uh, it's been our pleasure to work with your staff and to work with the board here. You've got a wonderful staff. They were very accessible. They provided us the information that we needed on a timely basis and very insightful. So, I think you should be very proud of them. We do appreciate the cooperation we received, and it's been a pleasure working with you folks as well. If you do have any questions, we'll be happy to respond to them.
Okay, once again, thank you very much, yes. Okay, board members, with all that information there, we've got some homework to get a hold of here, and with the superintendent, we'll be discussing this more, I'm sure, uh, very soon. So, let's move on to three point two now. We'll have Mr. Van Heuculum to the podium there, and we're gonna get the ABCs, the Annual Measurable Objectives Report. And so, Jason, when you get there, you're ready to go.
There we go. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just to have some preliminary data for you on our EOGs and EOCs. So, you have that there in front of you. The first page that we're looking at is our proficiency report. You have a three-year trend there for all of the tested subjects. Green means we went up, red means we went down, and yellow means there was less than a percent difference between the previous year. Some highlights there, just to kind of pull out, uh, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven areas that we achieved the best in three years. So, third grade reading, seventh grade reading, third, fourth, and seventh grade math, eighth grade science, and Algebra I were the best in the last three years as far as proficiency. We had some that went down that we're watching closely, fifth grade and eighth grade reading, fifth grade and eighth grade math, uh, went down. And then English one and biology were both down. Remember, that proficiency is getting the students above that, um, minimum bar of the basic skills. Okay? The next page there you have is what we call a growth score. This attempts to, uh, measure, uh, a full year's growth by students using, um, their testing history, what we call expected growth. And in this particular metric, uh, zero means they met, uh, a full year's growth, a hundred and eighty days of growth. Okay, so anything above zero means we did our job. Okay? Typically, plus or minus point zero five percent is kind of within the margin of error there. So, are the two reds that we do have, fourth and fifth grade reading, um, are, are not that significant, all right? But they did not get above zero. You can see, most of the greens were above the point zero five, which means those students, on average, were above a full years, a full year of growth. So, teacher had them for a hundred and eighty days, they grew a hundred and eighty days. Last slide there is not populated yet with this year's data, because we don't have, um, we don't get that data from the state, but you have the other two years. This is the, the scale score, which is, uh, how we compare to other people, how we determine our rate of progress compared to other districts. This is where we get our ranking data from, uh, to determine our, our position within the state. And so, we won't get those until January twenty thirteen, but I did want to show you where we, what we've done in the past. We typically do go up, but so does the state. So, this is the, the rate of change. We're measuring our rate of increase versus other people's rate of increase, um, according to that scale score. The last page you have there is that, um, we used to call this AYP, annual yearly progress, and now we call this AMOs, annual measurable objectives, uh, very similar in how they're reported. And you can see that, uh, this year seventeen out of our thirty-eight schools met all of their, uh, objective targets. And that's where we get into our subgroup data. And so, schools have individual subgroups, uh, based on their student population. This includes, um, ethnicity, it includes special ed, it includes ESL, English as a second language, it includes free and reduced lunch. And so, if you have a certain number of students within a, in that population, you have what's called a subgroup, and it digs down a little bit deeper to see, how are you doing with those particular students that have those factors? This will be the last year that we will use the ABC model from North Carolina. As we've kind of prepped you before, we're moving to, uh, the Common Core and Essential Standards. So, the next two years will be, uh, testing with North Carolina developed tests, and then in two thousand and fourteen, we'll be part of the Smarter Balance Consortium, which will be a national test in two thousand and fourteen. So, a lot of, um, um, changes in the testing world. We won't have direct comparative data, uh, from our previous testing history. Any que, any questions?
Okay, board members, anybody have any questions they want to ask Mr. Van Heuculum? Start with Mr. Fur. Okay, Ms. Furtinball?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have two questions. First of all, Jason, do we trend, um, for example, in the, in the, uh, slide here you have shown up is the percentages from a cohort. So, how did, and I know this doesn't show like K one-two, but how did a cohort of students, which will in general be the same population, although not exact-
Yeah.
How did they trend from grade to root grade? And the reason I'm asking is, I've heard this from a couple of teachers, the Y is my best place to get information, but, um, that they have seen, as the economy had challenges or continues to have challenges, um, it's apparent that parents are using less daycare and after-school programs in favor of-
Sure.
-of a parent or grandparent looking after the children. And they feel like some of that structure, whether it be preparing for kindergarten or enrichment after school, is missing. And so, therefore, they're afraid where those children will be as they reach these later grades.
Yeah.
So, do we trend by that cohort? I'm really curious to-
Yeah.
You know, if, if it's gonna go up and down.
Yeah, and so what we do, if you look at that first page there, you just kind of take a diagonal, and you do a, you have some attrition there, you have some that join the cohort, some that leave. But in general, you're right, we're talking about pretty much the same children. So, if you looked at the far left-hand column there, third grade reading, two thousand and nine, that cohort was at seventy point four percent. Then in two thousand and ten, those kids were fourth graders, they were about the same, seventy point three. And this year, even though that's a red, it's seventy-one point five, the cohort actually was up by a percentage. It was, it was red in, in comparison with fifth grade the previous two years, but it was up if you just looked at the cohort. Does that make, does that help?
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just looking at now, like, third grade reading actually is down. Actually, but then it went back up, yeah. Well, I guess it'd, it'd be interesting to see. I think that probably has more impact on the, from the K, and I know it's not the same testing, but the K one-two into the three, four, five, because after fifth, they're really pretty much not using a daycare or after-school enrichment. Not so much, but, yeah, I, I just thought that was an interesting observation, because I, I've heard that from a couple of people now, that they're wondering how that's going to affect as they proceed in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
So, and then my second question is, on this annual measurable objectives-
Yes.
Does the AMO still have the percentage of increase required? Because under the AYP, part of the reason we had so many, so few schools that would make AYP before is that, once a school got to a certain level, maybe an eighty-eight, ninety percent, it's very hard-
Right.
-to bump another percent.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, does this, you know, all of a sudden, we jump to seventeen schools? Is there that same kind of percentage required?
I believe so.
Or is it a fixed measure?
Yeah, I wish Matthew was here, I'd ask him directly. But we do have individual targets for individual subgroups by school. So, for example, the African-American population at particular school needs to hit this target, and then we, as a system, have that particular target. Um, and those targets go up every year because of the No Child Left Behind legislation. I don't want to say that with a hundred percent confidence, but I'm pretty sure, which would, which would indicate some celebration there on our part if that were true.
Well, that's what I want to know, how to read that number. If, if you could just, um, maybe-
Yeah.
-send us a note about that.
I could address that, uh, the target.
Yeah.
Were adjusted, um, this year, readjusted to move away from the one-hundred percent expectation of proficiency in two thousand and fourteen. So, I do believe what you're saying is true, that we have made some adjustments, and that might have resulted in more schools getting one-hundred percent. But I, I think something that, that needs to be pointed out that's not in the state report is that we've moved away from the all or nothing. And I would be interested in looking at the percentage of targets that we have achieved in each of our schools over the last few years and how that's changed this year, because certainly we're doing better than, we're not perfect in terms of reaching one-hundred percent of the students, but we're doing better-
Absolutely.
-at reaching more of the students, and that would show that.
Yeah. So, this one-
I, I like the fact, I'm sorry, you know, that this is showing, and, and congratulations to the, the schools, but I want to make sure we understand too, that we're not comparing last year, this year, because it's changed.
Right.
And so, you just can't say six to seventeen. But on the other hand, if, if there's a better way for our schools to feel successful-
Sure.
-then-
Yeah.
They should be. They should have something that they can individually measure, not-
Yeah.
-what the state says, oh, you've got to go up a point five or a point six or something. And there's no way that you, you know, that some schools can ever get there, so.
Yeah, and so, I think you're absolutely right. And so, this means seventeen schools met all of their objectives, but all the rest of the schools met most of their objectives. Eighty-five percent, ninety-five percent of their subgroups are being met. If a, if a school has twenty subgroups and they miss one of those subgroups, then they're not in this category, even though they were successful with nineteen of the twenty subgroups. Okay? So, and a subgroup can be as specific as, um, you know, get down to, to race and disability, or race and English as a second language, so have multiple factors, or free and reduced lunch and this, okay? Yeah.
Ms. Blackwelder, you have some concerns, questions?
Jason, I do, I'm sorry. Jason, on the, um, schools meeting expected growth status-
Mm-hmm.
-chart.
Yeah.
The middle, we've always kind of stayed consistent, but it's really declined. Are there any indicators, since we don't have any additional information, why that number dropped?
Not at this time. I mean, I know which schools did and which schools didn't, but other than that, I don't, you're right, we dropped about ten percent, which is three schools, yeah, or three, four schools, yeah.
Okay. No, nothing to tell us?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kiger?
I'm fine.
Ms. Carpenter?
I want to thank you for the work you've done and-
Oh, I'm sorry. And I think you made a good point, and I think we were talking earlier, with No Child Left Behind, I think with the new course of study which we're taking with the core curriculum, I think we're gonna see maybe that change. So, the No Child Left Behind, it's not been reauthorized, so we may see some changes coming with this. I, I really feel that we're gonna see that maybe be replaced, so we may see the standards change some. When I was at the national convention, uh, most of our workshops were actually on this. And so, I think we're gonna see some standards change, and that may be, will be put aside, and, um, so I will talk about that later. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Yeah, you're gonna get your turn on that real soon. Ms. Mindet, do you have any questions, concerns?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment as a, as a citizen out there who was sort of out of things for a while, as far as schools were concerned. We are very concerned, and I think it came out at the meeting the other day, about the, um, beliefs that the public has about the public schools, not doing their jobs and so on and so forth. And I think one of the reasons, big reasons, is that the, the way schools are measured is constantly changing. And it's not anything that you're doing, it's something that's being imposed upon you. And the public doesn't understand that these, these determinations are different year to year to year, and they just are totally confused when they read these things in the paper. So, I don't know how we get out of that situation, but, uh, whether we need to start to formulate some way to, to advertise to our public that, um, these children are progressing. It just, sometimes it's easy to pick out details, if you're a negative type person, and make it look the opposite. And I think it's because of the constant change, and here we go again, we're gonna change again.
Thank you, board members. Dr. Shepherd wants to talk, yes?
I agree with Ms. Mindet in that it, it's confusing now, but I would say that with the ABCs of public education in place from nineteen ninety-five till today, we have seen the most consistency that we will see.
that we will see. I think that the changes that we're going to see in the coming years, it's going to get even more confusing. And it's going to be our job to simplify and clarify and make sure that the public gets a good understanding. And I believe the best way to do that is in comparing our scores to other districts, because as the metrics, as the metrics change, that comparison, regardless of how we're doing it, should be consistent. I would say I appreciate Dr. Kirk not putting in front of you a card provided today by our state superintendent and chairman of the state board with, with some wonderfully positive comments about public education in North Carolina. And I would encourage you to take these with you and to use these. And we may quote a few of them here in a minute when we start talking about graduation rate. But there's a lot of good news statewide to share, and it's our job to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Thank you, Jason, for the report. And we appreciate all the hard work you put into getting that together for us. Okay, now we're going to move on, board members, to 3.3, where we have Dr. Louder going to talk to us about the graduation rates. Dr. Louder, when you're ready, go ahead.
Okay, I have tried to keep it very simple, but I am happy to report to you that our graduation rate increased again this year from 84 percent to 86.3 percent. It's 6.1 percent higher than the state average. And this chart that you have in front of you just reflects the, our, our average over the past four years and the state average over the past four years. The second chart, I know the cohort graduation rates just came out on Thursday, and so I tried to compile districts that are close to us and beside of us. I know you guys are usually interested in that. So we have listed basically the districts that surround us that often were compared with. Right now, this year, we ranked 19th out of 150 school districts in our cohort graduation rate. We were ranked 20th last year out of 150 districts.
Excuse me, Dr. Lou, you said 150 districts?
115, I'm sorry.
15, okay.
Yes. Three years ago, it was in the 60s. I don't know for sure, about 62. 19. And the last chart is the, all of our schools by school, and their cohort graduation rate, so it begins with North Carolina, then Cabarrus County Schools, and then each one of our schools with their rate. And I would just like to say that the thing that I'm the most proud of is that all of our high schools are above the state average. So it's something that we can definitely celebrate, that we increase, and no matter what school you go to in Cabarrus County, you're above the state average in our graduation rates. Obviously, everyone is not graduating, so we're still going to work to increase to get that 13 percent, to get everybody graduating, and that's ultimately our goal, but it is something that we can be proud of at this point.
I agree with you, Dr. Louder. We've come a long ways, but we're not where we want to be yet. And of course, you know, not to rain on the parade, but when you look at the Cox Mill, though, with 98 percent, 98.3 percent, that in itself will help bring us up. I don't know what they're doing out there, and with Hickory Ridge at 95.9, whatever it is, it needs to be cloned in the other high schools. Board members, do we have any questions that they'd like to, you'd like to bring to Mr. Louder's attention? Everybody good? No, I'm just, I don't know that everybody has questions.
I'll just comment on, I think the 98, 95 at Cox Mill and Hickory Ridge are outstanding, but to me, when you look at the PLC number at 89, knowing the background and the history there, that's a pretty phenomenal number. So, and it's Central and Concord, and whatever it takes to set the bar, that our expectation level is everybody that walks in the door at ninth grade, we expect them to graduate. I don't care where you're from, what your background is, who you are, who your parents are, we expect you to do the academic work and graduate. And somehow, that expectation level, and a pat on the back and good teachers, and I know that those two numbers can go up, and when they go up, the whole, the number, excuse me, for the district as a whole is going to go up as well. But outstanding job, and hopefully, we'll keep moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter or Ms. Minnet?
I just wanted to put in a plug for the meeting that was held this past week, and the initiatives that I hope will develop out of that program, because the very purpose of that program is to reach these children that Blake was speaking about just a minute ago, and get them through school and get them graduated, instead of having them drop out.
Absolutely. Ms. Carpenter, you have questions, concerns?
And I have to say the same thing. And I think it's all of us stepping forward and staying on a positive note, and everybody on this board stepping forward and doing what we need to do to be here for the children of this county. And I'll do whatever I have to do, if it's going to meet with them, to do whatever has to be done, because we're all here for the children. And every time they walk across the stage, to me, that's the proudest moment. And I'm with Blake to look down for the Performance Learning Center. Every time I see them, every time they walk across that stage, that's, to me, I think about, that's one child that maybe wouldn't have graduated. And it's wonderful. And I want to thank the teachers and everybody that makes that possible for these children to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. That might be something that I don't, I don't know whether we have this in the high school for the freshman handbooks or not, but a pledge, you know, that I'm coming to this school as a freshman, and I pledge that I'm going to graduate when my four years is up here. So something, just a little food for thought. Ms. Blackwelder, you have any comments?
And one that Chris will really come to appreciate. When I did this over the weekend with some people I was talking to, they said, you know it's because you got rid of the graduate, or the senior project. I said, I can't wait to tell Dr. Louder. Sorry, Chris.
No problem. Ms. Furtinball? Okay, Ms. Furtinball, you have a comment?
Dr. Shepherd, I just want to say congratulations to you and the staff for three high schools over 90. But I also look, am looking at this as an instructional leadership measurement tool, because when you look at the free and reduced lunch percentages, we had that report not too long ago, and, which is an indicator nationally of an at-risk population. And you look at the schools, in particular, I'm looking at how high Robinson and Northwest Cabarrus High School are, with their high free and reduced lunch. There is no reason, according to the Book of Statistics, why Northwest Cabarrus should be at 92.4, other than instructional leadership. So, and I think you know that.
Yes.
But for that reason, I expect Central Cabarrus to be popping next year. So the pressure's on.
I'll catch you drift there, Ms. Furtinball. Okay, Mr. Furr?
I was kind of going to say what Ms. Furtinball said. You was talking about how to clone Hickory Ridge and Cox Mill. No disrespect to those schools, but we all know the reasons.
Okay, thank you, board members, for all your input, and thank you, Dr. Louder, for bringing this report to us. Okay, we're going to move on to Ms. Donna Smith, going to bring us the student scholarship summary for, I think this is for the year-end there.
I think I bring good news to you tonight, and it's, again, our annual report of scholarships. And as you bring that up and look at the pictures, I'd like first salute some very important people. Because I think sometimes we look at numbers, and we see the numbers, but I'd like to put what was underneath those numbers. So tonight, I'm saluting students, and I'm saluting parents who responded in a timely way to graduation requirements, saying if you want to go to post-secondary work, you want scholarships, there's some things you've got to do. I'd really like to salute the work of high school counselors, who have worked very, very hard to make this happen. High school registrars, who were there ready to print these transcripts every time they needed them for their scholarship reports. The teachers who wrote so many letters of recommendations. The coaches who kept pushing and pushing and pushing, and also those letters of recommendation. And added to that, if you could just imagine, a high school where the senior newsletter continually comes out with scholarships. The emails continue to flow about scholarships. The announcements that are made, and I don't think I'm redundant in saying this, but the announcements are made again, and again, and again. Because it takes repeated messages for the word to get out that this scholarship is there, as well as continual changes on webpages. So with all that in mind, I think our celebration is good. In a time, as we looked at last year of a time where there's some economic concerns, we still did very well in graduations. Because as you'll see in the first chart here, in terms of scholarship dollars received, we are up over $1.5 million compared with where we were previous year. And we were very pleased with 19 million plus in 2011, but this year, we're looking over $20 million in scholarships. And I say that with the idea too, that I'd like for us to remember that that still seems to be an underreporting. And the concern is that there are some advisors now who are advising families, that when you receive or awarded scholarships, it's important that you keep that close to you, because by announcing that information, you could harm your chances of getting additional scholarships. And that thought is permeating some of our parents, so the open reporting is affected. And that's why I'd like to say, this is what we know it to be, but we know very well that this is an underestimate. With the idea also that many private scholarships are awarded on into June, after we stop our reporting of this. But again, I think that screen looks very, very nice, and I'm pleased to show you that. I'm also pleased to show you in the next screen of how we break down scholarships with academic values and athletic values. And we do have a high school lead for each school on scholarships. So we've worked real hard to establish consistency across scholarships, so that the standardization says that the value of this scholarship is the same across the board. So we're looking at standardized reporting. But again, that helps to show we did have 756 number of scholarships reported this year. The next part that has always been very helpful is the dollar breakdown. And as you look there, you'll see the last two years, 2011 and 2012, our growth in scholarships has been at the upper end. When you look at the $50,000-plus scholarships, that's where our number of scholarships that have been awarded have increased. And you'll see, as you look at some of the smaller value, which again, as we say every time, a $50 scholarship is a $50 scholarship, it is very helpful when you're paying that bill. But you'll see the large reduction in the scholarships under the value of 1,000. A lot of this is the fact that private scholarships have been reduced because of the economic well-being or poor-being, whichever way we might want to word that, because scholarships are often paid out based on the interest earned. And since that's down, that does affect that. The next chart you'll see is something we wanted to show, how each school contributes to the percentage of a total of 20 million. And you'll find there that the percentages do not necessarily come from the largest enrollments. It comes from a variety of factors, because the years when you get an athletic full ride, the years you get a military appointment, those really inflate your dollars. And so as you look at the percentages, again, I think it reflects back to how hard folks have worked, whether it's at the home or at the school. The next chart is actually a summary that we've looked at now. This will be our fourth year to add to it. The first left-hand side deals with the number of scholarships awarded, and then the number of students who have received those scholarships on the right-hand side. And so what we're not looking for necessarily is always to see a steady uphill incline, it's just the way numbers work with scholarships and how they're awarded. But again, that's for your reference. An area we look very hard at is also our race, because we want to make sure that we are looking at scholarships across the different race distributions. And you will see here, where we're looking at the scholarships and how they've grown in some areas and declined slightly in others. But please notice that this is a duplicated count. And that's the hard thing, because in our next slide, we'll look at an unduplicated count. Because when you look at total summary for the county, it's important, some students will receive more than one scholarship. And that's why we look at the unduplicated count. So 19 percent of our students who are seniors this year that receive scholarships, well, it was 19 percent, because we did have 1,934 graduating seniors. What this chart does not tell you, out of this 1,934 seniors, how many were going to college. But again, we're just trying to point out the percentage out of our senior class of that. And again, the 756 scholarships. So even though the total number of scholarships this year are down, our numbers are up, again, because the value of the scholarships were greater. Which leads us very quickly into next steps. We'll take any questions, but let me describe to you kind of where we're headed next year, is again, we will have a lead scholarship rep from each high school, because we feel like that has done a good job in their collaboration together, as well as getting the word out and learning tricks of the trade from each one. We already have our College Fair night scheduled in September. We have two financial aid nights scheduled, again, with College Foundation of North Carolina to lead our parents in that. And that's, again, a cooperative effort in November and January. And we want to continue trying to address the issue of the concern of the underreporting, because that, parents have to do how they're advised to do, and we have to support that. But again, the underreporting is concerning in that how many scholarships are awarded. We want to celebrate that, and give a chance to celebrate many students that we don't get the opportunity to celebrate. So I present to you a very positive report, and we're just pleased with where it is. And we look forward, again, to increasing again, if we can.
Absolutely, Donna. And I'm looking for us to achieve our goal of 90 percent by 2014, and I think we can do that. We're well off on the way, and with the changes implemented and constantly making changes here and there and all, we're going to get there. So with that being said, we thank you for the report. Board members, we'll start with Mr. Furr. Anybody have any comments on this side, questions? Ms. Furtinball?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, there is truth to the, your statement about students not wanting, or parents not wanting to say that they've received something maybe through a church, or some membership that the family belongs to, or, you know, some other organization. Because there are many, many scholarships that are decided by the guidance counselors at the school. And it is a well-known fact over, well before my kids were at that age, and now that they're well beyond it, that the guidance counselors distribute the scholarships. So it may not be the most worthy for a certain scholarship, but they haven't received anything yet. And so if the children are very open about, I'm so excited I got $500 from my grandmother's association or something, then all of a sudden, they're mentally checked off, that, well, we're not going to give them anything else. They got something on their own. And I see the value, you know, I can argue either way, I see the value of distributing, but at the same time, we'll never know how much was really received, as long as that kind of arrangement is done. And my second comment really is to you, Mrs. Minnet, just a suggestion, because of the Education Foundation. I think there might be interest in the community of people wanting to sponsor a scholarship, but their money alone, what they could contribute, maybe $100 or $200 or something, would not be enough to make a difference. But what if there was a way to pull money for the specific purpose of awarding scholarships? But we would need an agency to do that, which is why I'm thinking of you. You know, that, it would be an open call, if the community would be interested in supporting scholarships, maybe even targeting PLC students, or students interested in going to the community college, students who would not normally receive something. But just a thought, you know, like I said, an opportunity to pull money, all those 25s to $100 that may not be important individually to a college education, but together, they'd be a lot of money, so.
May I make a response to that?
Well, I was just going to say, if you want to start one for kids that want to study pharmacy, that graduate next year from Hickory Ridge High School, just let me know what I need to do.
Now, I think that also dovetails into the meeting that was held this, this week, because part, or if not the major focus of that entire project is to select those students who have the ability to be good students, to graduate, to go on to school, and to actually target them, and pretty much lift them up and carry them through the whole process of high school, and get them on into higher education. I think that's one of the big parts of it. And yes, I think that would be an excellent thing to do, and after you're retired, we'll see if you'd like to serve on a committee. Thank you.
Thank both of you, Ms. Minnet, Ms. Furtinball, now Ms. Blackwelder.
Donna, you know, that was interesting to me, because we've talked about scholarships so much since I've been on this board, and the number that has increased after what we've sent out to these kids is just unreal to me from my first year, and it's great. The one thing that we've always talked about is, you know, we all still get phone calls from parents and saying, how do we get the information? How do we get the information? Because we still don't do a very good job of that. I was thinking about it, and I wondered, and I know it's a wealth of information that they, and you have, it's certain entities and certain, you know, for pharmacy, or, you know, whatever it is. But is there any way that all the high schools could get some type of scholarship information on their main websites? You know, all of the parents tend to go to those websites and look for different information, but there's never anything on there about scholarships. And I know that's hard, and that's difficult, and probably making that mainframe to begin with is going to be difficult. But I think once we got it established, you know, they could modify it and change it as they needed to. My real interest is, this is my, well, now, eighth year on the board, and this is the eighth year that the Building Industry Association still says they have never gotten a winner from theirs, except for the very first year I was on the board. And that's $1,000. So somewhere, we do disconnect with some organizations at the application process, you know, whatever it is. But I just thought if we could get it on the website, it would be left up, not just to the counselors to pick and choose, but for the parents to actually go in and look at what they could decide if their child, you know, qualified. Is that something that would be possible, or is that just because it changes and the scholarships change? I thought about the pros and the cons, but I just thought if there was, you know, a drop-down box or something that could give them, you know, just some generic information to get them started.
On the main district page, there is a drop-down box with parents that says online scholarship guide. Probably what we, a piece that we could add to that would be the communication in terms of the steps of how to access that. At the same time, it is on each school's website, but it deals with the issue of what you're talking about. It takes about four clicks to get in there to find it, and it's difficult. So that's another piece of working to reduce the number of clicks for access. But yeah, communication-wise, we could address that.
Or could we make a direct link to each one of them? Because I went on Mount Pleasant just to pick that one out, and when, you know, my son was, I didn't find it. And I don't know that Mount Pleasant may have a different website, you know, information script, that homepage. But maybe if we could, if they go on our main website, I know a lot of- But maybe if we could, if they go on our main website, I know a lot of them do, could we make a link like we do with some other informations, like the online board policy manual, you know, some of those other things that give them a direct link? Could we do that?
We can certainly look into that, to make it much more obvious than under the parent link.
User-friendly, yeah. I know parents get really, you know, upset when they can't click one time and get everything that they need, so thank you.
We need a lot of one clicks then, don't we?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder, for the comments and recommendations. Mr. Cogger, do you have any further comments?
Yes, on a more serious note, sorry for that, the previous one, but I have used the one that's on the main webpage, and it's, it's, once I found it, it took some doing to find, but then after that, when you're in there, it's fairly easy to use, and I got a lot of good information, and I will go back and look at it more. So I think maybe sometimes it's just a matter of making sure people know it's there. I've tried to tell people, you know, friends of mine and parents of my daughter's friends, that it's there to make sure that they know to research. So anyway, that's, I'm glad that tool is there, and anything we can do to make it more accessible would be, would be good. So I want to revert back, Ms. Minnet's mentioned Senator Lee, I think, two or three times tonight. One of the things, at the very first meeting we had with him, he said that one of his goals was to make sure that parents would get as excited about academics as they would athletics. And if you look at seven, almost 700 scholarships worth $18 million versus 57 for 2.2, that kind of jumps off the page at me, and I hope that he is successful in that endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, you know, that's all I say, scholarships, scholarships. And we're still not quite there. I don't know what to suggest to these organizations. As you know, and you know firsthand, still having problems with, especially the small organizations, or not small, but I sit on two different agencies that give $1,000 scholarship. Again, this year, we didn't have any of the, the scholarship went to another county, didn't go to Cabarrus County, and we only had actually two applications from Cabarrus County. One of them had to be disqualified, and it's just, I know we've got people that wants that $1,000, because this is for a community college or a trade school. And do you have any suggestions for these organizations to maybe, I mean, I hand-delivered mine to our counselors, I mean, to the schools I was supposed to do. And I know that we've improved our site, which, you know, that one, and as Holly mentioned, maybe getting the individual high schools, if there's a way we can get that link to those individual high schools for those parents. But is there any other way that we can maybe get this across? Because I know these two agencies, they have that $1,000, but getting these applications in, can you make any other suggestion how we can get this out to, I mean?
Yeah, Mrs. Carpenter, you know, just thinking about that, like I said, my information is now five years old or so, but a lot of the local scholarships were pieces of paper that were in the guidance counselor area folder in their filing cabinet. Kids are less likely to go get a piece of paper today than they are online. And Donna, maybe if the guidance counselors would scan those in, where the kid or the parent can print it at home, instead of having to stop by the office. Anything that's online with the requirements, the due date, all that stuff that's on the form, might be a little more accessible and friendly when the parent and child is sitting down to do this on a Sunday afternoon. So just a suggestion, that may be a better way, instead of having paper copies, so.
Well, I know we take them around, so whatever, we need to get this done, because I want this money to stay in Cabarrus County, and I want our school kids to get it. $1,000 scholarships available.
And I truly know, next year when I stand here, I can tell you, we got that $1,000. I think along in that line, what we can do with our team that's actually the lead for this at each school is go ahead and bring the attention to them, again, of the smaller scholarships, and the fact of the response, whether it's paper or whatever, and let us problem-solve a little bit, maybe some other strategies in addition to the scanning, and also placing more in PDF documents.
And that may be a good idea. I mean, all the schools are trying to save paper, too. Maybe that's a good idea, just to scan them to start with and put everything on the computers. That may be something to save supplies and save money all the way around, maybe to scan things and not have to make copies of everything, to save money in the long run.
Let us troubleshoot that one again, see what other ideas we can come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Minnet, do you have any comments?
Okay, thank you, Donna, for the report. I think we got room for a little tweak in there, to pick up some more of these scholarships. And so, I think the board gives some good ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we're going to move on to our last report for the evening, and that would be with Ms. Klutz and Mr. Whitkey with the QSCB Monthly Update.
This evening, we're going to start with the milestone report. Maybe. And what I wanted to just do is touch on a few things. As I think everyone knows that's looked at the report, things are moving along very well overall. The major work that's going on this summer has to do with a lot of the mechanical work in five schools. We have five schools that literally are having all of their HVAC work replaced and all the controls replaced in them. So it's been a mad scramble to get it all done. Right now, we're, as we're looking at the deadline, I can say that the majority of those projects are at least on schedule, if not a little bit ahead of schedule. One, possibly two, will be very close to the, to the end of the due date. But I think the, what I found pretty amazing is the way our school staffs have worked with one another throughout this process. What Jerry Lambert and the other custodians in the schools have done is coordinated their efforts so that as one school was, let's say, Mount Pleasant Elementary School was being worked on, the custodians from that school went over and helped the middle school do their work to get done, so that now, as the due date for completion of their project nears, they're going to have a group of people come from middle school to help them do their work. So it's kind of, you know, each, each school helping another school to make it all work out. So that's going very well. The only remaining project of the projects that are not, that were not postponed, is now the Northwest Cabarrus High School Gymnasium Edition. That project is scheduled to bid in October. The bids will, I mean, the project will, the documents will be completed and ready for bid in late September, and we hope to have bids backed by the third week in October, so that we will present you with those results in the November meeting. And keeping our fingers crossed on the budget, it's, we did have a review meeting this morning, and the one thing I wish that I had known what a great job the architects were doing, because they have a wonderful presentation that I will present to you next month, along with Todd Berg and Steve Wallace from their firm. It is very impressive, and I think it'll, it does do many things, including sort of give a focal point to the entrance of the school, and a recognition, if you will, of its, of its place. And so I think you'll be very happy with that. So look forward to that next month, and I certainly will entertain any questions you have on the milestones.
Okay, board members, anybody have any questions at this point? Okay?
If I could. Mr. Chair, I have one question, just on the numbers. Lynn, in the QSCB-funded project status report, the one with the gray headers, just to remind me, the amount encumbered and the paid-to-date, those added together?
The amount encumbered is subtracted from the budget to equal the paid-to-date.
Is subtracted? Okay, because I'm wondering, what is, for that Northwest Cabarrus Gym project, where has $340,000 gone so far? Is that a duplicated number, or have we really spent that much?
Northwest Gym.
You've got a mountain covered in you. What have you spent?
Yeah, the monies that have been spent are the design fees.
So it's both of those columns?
You've got something encumbered, and you've got something paid.
Yeah, I don't doubt that that's, yeah, both, both of those numbers represent. We've had some engineering, because we've done fieldwork to test soil conditions and that sort of thing, and then we've also had the architects' design.
Okay, the numbers were just so close, I was wondering if that was the, okay, thanks.
That's just coincidence. The other thing I was going to mention, too, was in presenting to the Board of Commissioners this afternoon, we, I did commit to presenting to Dr. Shepherd, and in turn, presenting to you folks, a prioritization of the remaining projects that have been postponed to date for QSCB. So look forward next month to seeing that document, and then we will present it to them in October, once, once you all have looked at it and approved it, so thank you.
And we've jumped right over to the QSCB project status report, which is just our budget balances, and it indicates over to the right our project complete status. And what you also are referring to in this, this report, we'll have a request in 4.8 later in the day, where we're going to ask you to move $42,343 from the Coltrane Web project, the Magnet project, and we're going to ask you to increase the Central Cabarrus project to make room for the window project that we had there, so we needed some additional funds. And I think if you'll, you'll see there, we did move some money out of that project earlier in the, the project, and if hindsight was 2020, we would all be very rich, I'm sure. But hindsight is not 2020, so we did not know what we did not know at that time, and we are making better decisions now, or we're accommodating those decisions right now. So this is, this is what we, we need to do, and the, the project that we're moving the money from is 100% complete at that time, at this time. So we feel like we need to move that money to accommodate this project. Are there any other questions on this report?
Board members, any other comments, questions? Ms. Carpenter?
Just one. Now, so Beverly Hills is complete, and we do have, what, $1,912 left on that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so will we be able to use that somewhere else now?
I hope so, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, all right.
Well, more than likely, if I'm not wrong, I mean, right, you can correct me, but that'll be where we do the prioritization that you're talking about, on the projects that have been postponed or moved down to the very bottom of the line until we get what we're working on done. And just to reiterate on what Ms. Klutz said earlier, when you're working with these older schools, in particular Coltrane Web, Central Cabarrus, and even at Northwest, all these older schools, if we had some way of knowing what we were going to be running into in the very beginning, and it's like Ms. Klutz said, we might have been a little bit more accurate on our estimates. And I think that based on the circumstances, the age of the buildings, the knowledge that you men and ladies have about the finance and the buildings and all of that, done a fairly doggone good job, you know, to miss it. And take, for example, Central Cabarrus, who would have ever thought that we would run into asbestos taking windows out? If he was taking walls out, or something like that, you might expect that, but taking windows out to get into it, and by the federal law, we have to abate those issues, and therefore the money comes. And so I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we don't have a crystal ball down here, and so we can't just look into it and say, "Here's Central, and it's going to have all these different things," or Coltrane Web, or whatever. So you just have to dive into it. And another thing that I learned, and of course, the QSCB projects were approved in my two-year absence, but there was no contingency set for those QSCB projects, and therefore, that's why the money is having to be shifted. Is that not right?
Yes, sir.
So there was no contingency. In a traditional project that we do, we try to build in 5, 6, 8, maybe even 10% contingency to fall back on in the event that we have these issues. But in this case, we didn't have that, so we had to just give it our gut feeling, and based on knowledge and expertise and all that. But anyway, with all that being said, I appreciate your time, effort, and all that going into this report, and it looks like we're moving along fairly good, and I'm sure that we'll get it finished when enough time rolls around. So with that being said, are there any other questions, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Yes, Ms. Blackwelder.
Kelly, and we may have went over this before, but just remind me, the projects in the IT, such as Concord Middle, J.M. Robinson High, I know those are at 100%. Just kind of following up with that last question, when there's monies left over there, I know we would prioritize, but before we get there, when we're switching monies, would it not be easier just to pull that from those that are done, instead of having to move the monies and having to ask to move the monies?
We are pulling from projects that are 100% complete.
So that is, do all those make up that $42,000? No, because you said you were going to pull it from Coltrane Web, right?
Coltrane Web is 100% complete.
Right, but what I'm talking about is, can we intermix, just like Coltrane Web, where do, where do we see, I mean, I see that, is that red, the $42,330, $43,000, is that where you're going to pull it from? Just that one lump sum?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and then we're going to reprioritize all the rest of these on the right-hand side?
Anything on the bottom.
Right.
The very bottom down here, these postponed projects at the bottom, we're going to reprioritize those.
Okay. Okay.
And I would also just add that we will sweep all the funds that remain in the other projects. As they do become complete, we'll sweep those funds in. And that was one of the reasons, I know the commissioners didn't want to hear this this morning, this afternoon, but it was one of the reasons I was really pushing off that prioritization process, because you do want to look at all the dollars available at that point in time, and I wanted to make sure that all the major projects were bid, and we knew what those budgets, we wanted to make those budgets set at that time, so that we knew, we could make sound decisions regarding the remaining funds.
And that's where I was going, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, thank you, Mr. Whitkey and Ms. Klutz, and you can just stay there, Ms. Klutz, because you're right up next. Board members, we're going to move on into the items that's going to be for consideration at our August 13 business meeting. These are either go on the consent agenda or the action agenda, and our first report, first item is 4.1, the budget resolution. And Ms. Klutz, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think I'm going to be here for a while. We're going to talk about budget for a little while. The budget resolution, I'm going to present the final budget after we've talked with you since, what, October, November, so I'm going to present the final budget to you. And we're presenting the, in the proposed form with a few exceptions, and I'll note those for you. The proposed version had a 3% projected salary increase, and the reason that was a 3% projected is we were very hopeful back then, and it was a long way away, and we ended up with a 1.2% salary increase, and we're very thankful for that 1.2% salary increase. Employees also received five days of leave in addition to the salary increase, and I'll give you more information on that in a little while. The state discretionary reversion was reduced from the original form in the proposed, so we only are appropriating $3 million of fund balance rather than the $4.6 million that we anticipated when I did the planning budget. So there are also a few budgets that DPI did not have ready for us. They have the majority of them, so I will have a few budget amendments, and that's fairly normal for you. You're used to that. So then we're going to talk about our local budget. So the county originally adopted their budget at the previous year's funding level, less the contract for the school nurses, and they did a direct fund to the Cabarrus Health Alliance for $793,633, and that would not be any less service for us. We would receive the same funding, the same service level, except for the funding would go to them instead of us. They amended their budget to include a 1.2% pay increase for our local staff, and that was approximately $246,000 for us, in addition to our funds. The county appropriated our funds by purpose function, and that's different than it has been ever in the past for us. Any movement of our funds will have to, more than exceeding 10% movement, will require a commissioner approval, just the same as you approve by function, they will need to approve by function the same manner. Okay? We received an additional $143,000 that was allocated to Cabarrus County Schools for technology specifically by that function, and that was a result of Canapple City Schools receiving less in the facility fund, and that was because their ADM in Cabarrus County was less, and so Canapple City has elected to do fewer of the facility projects. There has been discussion of additional capital funding, one-time funding from the county, but we, and we obviously desperately need those capital funds, and we're still waiting to hear about that. Talk a little bit about the 1.2% pay increase. That's for certified personnel, teachers, instructional support, and school-based administrators. They're all paid off salary schedules, and that represents no step increase, but a 1%. Each step is a 1.2% increase. And if you're familiar with how those are represented in the future, in the past, so you would get a step increase and you would get a pay increase. so you would get a step increase and you would get a pay increase oftentimes. But this year, you get one, you only get the 1.2% pay increase. Over the last few years, we've, we've got nothing, neither or. So the 1.2% is good. Principals do not receive the extra step for three years, the three years of experience. And that's very similar to the teacher step increase. This slide basically represents that everyone gets a 1.2% pay increase, basically kind of bottom line. Personnel who do not receive the, enough much to get their, their step or their, their experience, they do, they get held harmless, they still do get 1.2% pay increase. Again, everyone gets 1.2% pay increase. Central office and non-certified staff get a 1.2% pay increase. Bonus leave in summary, all full-time permanent staff receive the five days. And then if you separate from service and if you retire prior to June 30th, then you, you're eligible to be paid out for those five days. But that's the only way that you're eligible to have those days paid out. Part-time permanent employees receive a pro rata share of that, that leave. And the important part of this is we worked hard with our staff to ensure that our teachers and our person, our certified personnel didn't fall victim to the use it or lose it limitation. At June 30th, if you've not used those five days, those days will go away. We understand the restrictions of the calendar. So we at Cabarrus County Schools have decided to apply those five days to the five annual leave, required annual leave days so that your regular annual leave will go into your balance. And you can use those as, at your leisure. Manual exceptions will have to be made for those employees who do not have required annual leaves, like 12-month employees like myself. Okay? So the cliff is here, we've talked about it for years. And it's, all of our federal funds are expiring. And if they haven't, they will on September 30th, except for our race to the top. But we've survived, we have our parachute and we're prepared. So we did it, we made it. So just a couple of things. This is our budget resolution. And just one or two things prior to that is that in our state budget, we have a little bit of flexibility this year that we've not had in the past three or four years. Jason typically has, CNI has several positions, five, 10 positions, that they'll hold back. And they'll, they'll allocate those positions as we'll have principals call us and say, I have, I'm growing, I'm growing. I have this many students in my classroom or they're showing up. And we've always held those and accommodated those as we need them. I think Jason has allocated 10 teachers this week. I get an email every time we get a teacher position added, which is a wonderful feeling to be able to do that at this point. We've not been able to do that the last several years. I've also been able to build into our budget so that our superintendent has the flexibility to do that when students actually show up. And we've not had the flexibility to do that in the past years. So we do have some flexibility to do that. I also want to thank our budget committee for the last two years and let them know that we appreciate the service that they've, they've committed to us, the time that they've committed to us. And we, we want to acknowledge that we don't anticipate going through more cuts over the next couple of years. And what we want to do is review and modify our budget process. And in November, December, my staff's going to start looking at our budget process and implementing a new budget process and bring you a different process because we don't plan on cutting anymore. So we want to look at it. So we plan on bringing you a different process, probably December, January, November timeframe. So we, our hats off to our former budget committee. And we want to bring you a new process in the future. So this is our budget resolution. So we'll start, it starts with local funds and then state funds. You've got your federal funds, child nutrition, Kids Plus, and your capital outlay funds. And then what we have, the last document, is the questions and answers for the five days because we have many a staff that have lots of questions about those five days and how we administer that. And we administer that based on the session law and what we're told to do. And we do as much for our staff as we possibly can. We want to be as lenient as we can and give them as much as we can. But we are, we work within the law. All right, now, I'll take questions, concerns?
Okay, board members, as you know, we've already give the approval of the proposed budget. Now, this is the final budget, except for the changes that Ms. Brox, I mean, Ms. Klutz just gave us. So do we have any further discussion on this before we try to get a consensus for the consent agenda next week?
Mr. Chairman, is any related item because of the calendar and the bonus days? I know in the last, we discussed the calendar that there was discussion, oh, well, we'll make that training half-days. But there's nothing about the word bonus to our staff if they can't take a day off, ever. There was only one day in that entire calendar they can take off. So for Dr. Sane and Jason, are those number of common core training days required? Or is that how you guys spread it out as a local decision? Because that's, that's kind of the joke amongst teachers right now is, what's the bonus? We can't take a day off.
Yeah, we signed an agreement with the state that we would use five days for staff development rather than instruction of students. And that those five days would be designed for common core days. So I feel like we're honor-bound to at least provide a half a day of common core instruction. And the other half of the day, if I remember correctly, they're going back to their schools to have time to work.
Okay, what about the, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but we only had 10 workdays to work with, right?
Nine, I think. We were one short this year because we have one extra holiday, one extra day that's designated as a holiday.
Because of COVID-19?
Yes.
Okay, so the other four days, they weren't open, they were still teacher-required. They weren't open because y'all made the comment, there was only one day all year that the teachers could electively take, right, as an annual leave day?
One day is capped by, by schools. One day is capped by the system for some system-wide things. And then five days are capped by common core. That leads me to seven, and I'm not sure what that last one is. I'd have to go back and look at the calendar.
Okay, I guess I would really like to honor the intent of those five days. Because you all that are not in the schools anymore can take your days whenever you want to. But the people who are in the schools cannot. They are bound to be there and that's their commitment career-wise. So if you would all think back to the last time you were bound by the school calendar you're creating or have created, and that they can't take a single day off. Because I think it came out, when we looked at it, there was only one day in one semester. The other semester, there were no elective days.
And it's going to get worse if we have snow days. We were just very, very privileged last year not to have any inclement weather to cause us to, that's right.
Well, I guess I would like to see if, because we would want to do that at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, if they can figure out how to give one day in the other semester, whichever it was. I just remember when we had to switch that calendar, the first year we had to switch. And we had all those bad weather days and staff did not get a single day off second semester. And then we were getting real close to taking spring break away. And they said that was the most horrible semester to teach in their careers.
Actually, the worst one, I think, is when, back when Hugo and we got our five days of spring break in September. That was the worst that I can remember.
Yeah, and I wasn't on the board then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, are there any other discussion on this item, on the budget resolution?
I have a question for Ms. Klutz. Just if you wouldn't mind, comment briefly to me what you think the impact to you personally on your job performance will be of that 10% requirement now of, from the county of having to report the purpose and function?
I don't think that it's, the impact is going to be on me personally. I think it's on us as a system. And I think it's a financial impact and I think it's negative. And I, it's, because what we do is you as a board are willing to work with me on June 28th to come together and do budget amendments for me so that I can take, that I can pull together every penny and reimburse local for anything that I can get from state or anything that I can get from federal. And those decisions are all made at, at June 25th, after we run the last payroll, after we run. And those, we work with a budget of $250 million. You cannot, as, as good as I, you know, as good as I am or as good as anyone else is, you can't project down that close every time. I can get it as close as I, as I want to, but I want every dime. I want every $50, I want every $100. And I'm not going to be able to get it. And there's going to be a financial implication. So for me personally, I don't mind doing the work. I don't care. But there's going to be a financial implication to that. I'm not going to be able to get every dime.
That was part of my curiosity because in the two cycles I've been here, it seems like there, at the very end, we do a very nice job of managing the process and getting,
Every dime.
squeezing the turnip as hard as we can and getting every dime. So I just was curious about that and wanted your comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger. Are there any other, Ms. Carpenter?
And I would like for us, when we do lose those dollars, I want to make sure that the county commission realizes what we've lost because of that or who the powers to be. When we do lose those, we let them know what's been lost because of timeframes or because we had to do this. Because until you can put that in the layman's terms too, sometimes people don't understand, well, this is what's happened because of this. You have to lay the groundwork to say, hey, you've did this and this is what's happened. Because sometimes it's just communication problems. So I think that'd be important to let, you know, let them see that.
I think you're right, Ms. Carpenter, that's cause and effect, absolutely. All right.